Thirty-one. Officially called the January the tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. And we will begin with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next. Next, is everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Were there any additional corrections to those minutes?
No, I made the motion to accept them as was sent to us.
On favor, aye. Okay, next is approval of funeral deeds, payroll vouchers, adjustment, and monthly bills. Do I have a motion that we sign and approve those?
I'd second it.
On favor, aye. Okay, next, as we do every year, is election of officers for this year. Do we have any nominations from the floor?
I want from the floor or from the board?
From the board.
I'd like to keep it the way it is.
On favor?
Aye.
Board will, town council will remain the same. Next.
So on the water project, we are, like I said, last month, year substantial completion. Damon and I actually had a walkthrough with our contractor out of the plant today. They requested substantial completion, which means the town has beneficial use of the project and trades began and over two years now. With that, we know they're still there for their big work. For example, the installation of the roof is scheduled, I believe he said, not this week, next week, I believe, but next week. Should be completed prior to the end of the month. The entrance gate is also scheduled for the week of January seventeenth. Both of those things should be done by the end. The new entrance gate. So after today, I will put together what's called a punch list and the certificate of substantial completion. We'll come back and present it to the board and you guys can approve it once Damon's comfortable with where we stand. We know there's still some issues to work out, so we're working through all the paperwork. But it does mean that the plant is online, producing water, sending it out to the system. Most of the stuff that remains is cosmetics, make with paint, paving, grass out of the plant. If you go out there, it's still a little rough looking site, site wide. But inside, the project is functional for the most part. Our roof up on County Road has been installed, the contractor's still cleaning it, flushing it, disinfecting it, which again, we're looking to improve. Weather's kind of set back to the typical weather and weather. They've installed in the air the glass factory. They've made all the necessary work at the school, but they haven't made that connection yet until the line is just. That'll be the, almost the last thing. They, so we have people from them, of course, the front of our base, they request, et cetera. I anticipate after this month, we will sit down, do a C A and go through where we are at financial of the project and put together our existing remaining plans for this, which I already talked to Damon about, so we have several options for needs. I don't really pay for questions or change order, but it's just an update. Yeah. On the wastewater project, we are doing fieldwork in, in the cold. This week might be a little hit or miss based on how cold it is and if it's snow and ice and stuff. They've completed all the manual inspections west of the state road. There's a couple, I think, they couldn't find, so we'll have to come back and find those manholes. And then working from north to south, they've got roughly to Bennett Street. And then this week and next week, they'll finish up inspecting all the manholes south of Bennett Street. Then those people at the back, they found some potential places where it looks like either groundwater or stormwater is coming in. So we wanted to do some more investigation there. They've already found some manholes that require some correction. So this is all, this is all promising. Some issues that we can correct. Next couple weeks will probably be, you'll see if they're around. There's a couple guys doing manual inspections and then I just need more of a, or share the other. Field manager person will probably walk around. So, once it's all done, we'll do a summary report, we'll present it to you and all of that. I believe, I'm sure he's been calling with Damon pretty regularly. Haven't heard of any major complaints or issues or anything. Our surveyors will be back for me because of seventeenth also, so we'll probably get the field guys out and then the surveyors. So, like I said, depending whether we get a bunch of snow or something, I'll be pretty. String gauge calibration study is done, submitted, I copied, send you guys a copy of it for your records. It's into I D M, I haven't heard any feedback. I assume no news, good news on that submitted. Check the box when I'm getting that done. Stormwater study, I heard good news. The county awarded Westport fifty-five thousand dollars to a comprehensive stormwater study and model of town and stormwater. So we will begin working on this as soon as possible with your permission. I believe some kickoff dates were sent over to you guys. I don't know if, if the date has been picked.
Twenty.
The twentieth, okay, awesome. I think we probably need to put together a contract for that. I'll just have him bring it to that meeting. It's, if it's a go and, and I don't know if you want to send it over to, to me yet or.
Yeah, I always, any contracts we sign.
We'll send it to him and then if you guys are confused, that will bring it to the meeting. Either sign it then or hold it to your house meeting. But we'd like to get going as soon as possible. I think that's, that's all I have in a snapshot. There's a couple of pictures here of the new building and then where the old building was. It just looks like a concrete lab. I think we'll have a couple hundred thousand, but there are some known needs. We've already identified a pretty significant stretch of pipe that needs to be replaced. And I don't have any, I, contract, I'm not going to give you a break. So, depending on what they come back with. The other concern on that is. But we'll deal with that here in a couple, hopefully in a couple of weeks. And we have these two projects now.
I have a question, Rachel. I know today, I was talking to Mark, he said because of the insulation not being there, that the building wouldn't go above forty-three. And that's with all heaters going full blast. Have any idea what insulation putting in, would that bring that up to? So kind of heaters kind of kick off and open around twenty-four hours?
It should, it should be controllable. I mean, the, you, you have to keep in mind, there's two very large tanks of cold water in there. It's designed to be, you know, ambient, so sixty degrees.
That was the design?
Yeah, but in the summary, you know, it'll be cooler than that because the water will naturally help keep it cool. The, the issue with the insulation is we, we processed that change order, I would say, last month. So U S A approved it last month. And there's a, I think, I think there was a four weekly time to get the contract out there, so that puts in that. So unfortunately, that got delayed and the whole other stuff got lost.
That's why I was curious about what the ambient temperature was supposed to be and then heaters bringing that to then be able to kick off and last a while and.
Yeah, and the insulation that we ended up going with in the last change order is spray foam, so it should be a very durable product that lasts. I don't remember what the R value is, but, but it was part of the building code and the architects design. The electronics in there need to be kept around fifty degrees, so ideally, I mean, as long as they don't get a little freezing. We'll be all right for short term, but long term, plus there's, there's water in pipes and you don't want any of that.
What about the backwash?
Backwash?
Backwash and so on.
There's still some controls we're working out with West Tech, and we talked about it today, I walked through quite a bit. Some of the chemical feed systems, we're still, they're on the punch list. There's some valves and some slings, tweaking that needs to be done. And then West Tech, that's who provided the tanks. Their programming needs to be a little adjusted and we have some discussion to do with them as far as why is backwashing so much? It's not designed to have to backwash that much. So the first step is getting a chemical feed situated or not. You have too much chemical feed, then the plant has to work harder to take it out, right? So we can fix that, hopefully, the backwash will be less. Then we can see if it's a programming issue. There's a lot of, a lot of instrumentation and sensors and stuff in the plant. So some of that's going to struggle with just to get the guys that designed it all to optimize it to have a work running. So that's a part of the startup. I think Damon and Jay have been, you know, really helping, really working, getting it shared.
On the substantial completion, what will the actual date be with their requesting them?
They've requested as of December seventeenth. For an special today, we might push that to September, January. I wanted to get with you and I want to make sure there's no, like, it doesn't affect the town if we push it to January versus the summer. Because I know when that date happens, it's kind of when it transfers and it now becomes your ownership. So your insurance and all of that would take over. But it also triggers when all the warranties start. So right now, we're kind of in the, like, little process between warranties haven't started, but the manufacturer, it's all in use, you know? So that's, that's kind of the push to reach substantial completion is just so that all the manufacturer warranties start.
How will it affect the overtime that the guys are getting because of the backwashing and all of that?
Well, we were talking about that a little bit. We've discussed it with them, with, with the contractor and said, you know, they're responsible for that because the plant is not functioning the way it should be. Contractor's responsible for reversing the towns, by any means, tracking it. That's something we'll have to just figure out with the contractor and say, if they're working overtime because of the diet of the art complete, you have to pay for it. If we're working overtime because. We, we want to, we want to, but something that is not the contractor's control, then obviously. We're going to have to just, I think, go through it and, and make sure their date aligns with when it was actually, is actually.
I think that's something we, it's the town council admin about. If it's not special on this backwash issue, if it's not functioning properly like it should and we got what they babysat it, it's not turned over to us as a functioning unit right now.
Understand, yeah. The, the, the backwashing is, is working the way it's supposed to. The issue is just it's more frequent than it should be. The way I understand it from Jay, it's, it's, it's triggering and it's doing the automatic backwash. It's just way more often than it should be.
So, well, yeah, but that's in it, just semantics. It's working, but it's not working as it should.
Jim, Harry, that part of the project, that's, that's not really a big of its fault because it's, it's running, as I said, they can't control how quickly you have to backwash the water. So they, they can't do that, but they, they, they finish the tanks per time on that part.
I do. Yeah, I do see a follow-up meeting. We had our meeting today, we put together a big long list of stuff they still need to do. A follow-up meeting will probably need to be held with our conference call or a person and, you know, for as well, and we'll come at that time. Go through all this specific detail and actually nail them what date we want to. Because it is going to be ultimately up to you guys when we will have beneficial or substantial moves of. Again, like you said, this is where it gets a little tricky, because it is producing water. So we are.
That part's true.
That part is true. And, you know, if the contractor has done everything they're supposed to do, their part is done. Here lies the question with, like, the manufacturer of this specific item. We hold them responsible through the contract, you know? I will work on the paperwork and, because you guys will continue for next dayman. And then, like I said, we'll probably set, schedule a follow-up night to review for you guys. The final, final everything. And then just, well, you know, this will probably be my last meeting here for a little bit. Al, he's met Al, the company president, you met Triane, and of course, you know, Matt. They'll be taking over, kind of coming to meetings and updating, getting through anything. Not planning to need work until early February, but, you know, things happen. So the plan is February and the nation backs. That's the plan, but you'll see, you'll see my face for a little bit. Celebrate.
Take care of yourself.
One other thing, have you, or maybe anything with Marsha to do the, like, track and do everything?
See, we, I think we need to, I still had it on my calendar, it should tomorrow, and then I forgot to call her. She was free to go conference call tomorrow. Do you have any time tomorrow? Do you call, are we here?
Sure. I won't, I probably won't have everything ready by tomorrow, but I, I mean, I would like, well, they've noticed.
We do like this week.
Okay.
She's on vacation as of Saturday.
Soon.
Yeah, so.
Fifteen, yeah.
I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, we'll be staying.
Okay.
And I can either come back or.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Okay, next on our list, the Kier County solid points.
She said she was going to try to be here, but she.
I just kind of an update on that. There's been some talk, of course, the recycling center closing down and we looked into that to try to keep it open. And the plan in there, it looks like it's feasible. But it's hoping Manny was here tonight to kind of explain that, so since yes, and.
Do you want me to update?
Yeah.
What I'm talking to her about or? She said that they want to keep the center open because of the recycling and she's pretty confident that they will be able to get a grant to assist with manning the, the facilities out there. So it could be as simple as she writes us a check for a whole year payroll or we calculate it out or some kind of agreement with it. But she kind of calculated it at the fifteen dollars an hour kind of thing. I also did some checking to ask about trash removal. And I talked to Mark Fixmer today about the potential, the potential of it being less or more per month. Right now, he's kind of estimated to be about five hundred and fifty a month for us to pay for trash removal. And he, he talked about that, you know, if it's cold winter and nobody comes out and they don't need someone to pick up the truck or pick up the trash by the truck twice a week, then maybe we can call them and say, hey, we don't need you to pick it up this week. And they can do some prorating and do some adjusting based on how much we actually use it. The other thing that we talked about was the large pickup, because I know in the past, they've made arrangements to, like, take mattresses and different things. And he said that he suggested that we get a thirty-yard roll-off dumpster and they charge a hundred and eighty each time they haul it. And then they also charge thirty-six dollars per ton of waste that they take.
How much a ton?
Thirty-six dollars. And he suggested that it might be something that we would just do from time to time. If we found, he felt like if we weren't having to have it removed once every month or two, then they would have to start looking at charging us like a rental fee for the dumpster. But they also suggested that maybe we, we say from April to October, we put it on the property and then call them as we need to call. But he just kind of suggested some different options because I asked him if it would be free for us to have that thirty-yard dumpster sitting there all the time. He kind of, kind of alluded to if it wasn't paying them enough, then they would have to start charging us something for it to sit there. So there's some things to think about on how we want to handle larger waste. And we still could come up with a charter of mattresses, so it's ten dollars, a couch is fifteen or whatever. We could determine how much we want to charge people. And he kind of gave me some ideas of what they charge people to do trash removal that's larger than just the bagged trash that goes in the smaller dumpsters. He also said that right now that they have three dumpsters out there that accept trash. But he suggested we fill one dumpster at a time. And if we find that we're consistently only using one or two dumpsters and not three, they can remove the third one and it would save us additional costs. So there's some things that we'll probably just have to learn as we go through it. The other thing he said is that even though we're only retired on last Friday or Saturday, they will still put somebody out there until we can get something in place. So the transfer is open Wednesday, it will be open Saturday, so people don't have to worry about it being closed in the meantime.
So do we think we're going to be able to offset the cost of dumpsters and transportation based on what we're going to take in per, per magnitude piece? Or are we going to have an expenditure?
Right now, it looks like the oil, like, the, it'll offset the cost. But I have very sketchy numbers. I have one month with a total cost and it's in June, so it's warmer. It's when people would be out cleaning and doing stuff more. So ideally, if we get, get assistance with payroll, if we're removing traps for five fifty a month and we don't have much additional cost in that, we're probably going to be fine. But it's going to be a little bit of a learning experience to find out what people really dump there, how much money actually is coming in off the trash. There's some months that the trash bags are like a hundred trash bags. Well, a hundred trash bags, it's like two hundred dollars that's coming in. So it's kind of depend on what kind of month we have and how much people really use the facilities out there or not.
We need to keep track of that.
Because I don't think it's concerned.
Hopefully, when the board will go ahead and, okay, I don't know, I have to say, because I'm not there yet. Be okay with the wages. And then we just have to collect for the bags and so forth and use as many as we need. I don't know how many people use that because I don't use it.
And we'll have to put some things in place.
Yes.
As far as the collection, because it's probably going to be cash collection, we're going to have to set up kind of a, a system and how we're going to deposit that money each week. Money has to be deposited by the next day typically, so we'll have to set up some things. And there's some training that St. Board of Accountants will require, whoever is out there, they'll have to take that. So there's a little bit of a process. If we have a candidate, I guess my next question would be, how soon do you want to take interviews for people to do that position?
So they can put it on the board where, you know, we'll make that transition as far as focusing on that position.
Should be put it on next month.
One other thing too, what we'll have to, Damon mentioned this. If, I candidly too, say they have a sick on vacation at the time, boys want to throw in. Somebody's. You know, boy was, he might have his operation, sick of COVID. Then so, and so we'll have to. Fill in during those times as well. But on the surface of it, what Lori said and the information we've done, it's if they come up with the grant money to cover the salary.
That will greatly help and then I think that gives us this year to figure it out and to decide if it's feasible to continue. I think it will be, especially if.
Recycling, they'll be covered, but as far as the trash portion of the use of the question. And salary. Anyway, from the figures that we're getting, it looks doable that we can keep that open. And it's always been a contention is people being people, if that closes down, then we're going to have bags of trash along the road and mattresses and other things. That's seems to be the standard thing that happened and people that don't want to pay to dump the trash, they put that burden on other people. All right, good, next, Main Street. We, I, we had, oh, before I get into that too, people, I want to thank you, Connie, and Barb's not here, and I want to thank Barb too. There's no statue or monetary or no certificate in this, thank you. But I, you guys worked hard last year. And I was around to see what was going on for both Kiwanis and both the fall festival and some of the other thing. And I was remiss in not thanking you guys last year for the work that you've done. Here, here's the thing, and I'll be real quick about it. With any small town, it seems across the United States, and Lori gave me a link to see this. There's always a tension in the town of people that want to progress and move forward versus the people that want everything to stay the same. And it's not just here in Westport, it's all across the United States. Website I got into, they had taken opinion poll and worked from some other areas. So that's, we're in this tension right here. Certain groups want to move forward with things, like Main Street's trying to in their own way. And we want to too, versus the people that think the time has stood still and don't want to move ahead. I should be able to say that our man, like, has worked like that. And I've had other people come into town and, and say that Westport's a diamond in the rough. Did you need a chair? I don't want you standing, huh? You sure? All right. But, so in conjunction with that, we're having a new house built here. Where both I don't want, and this is in a house being built up there. One of the houses that we had on the condemnation list, got a call from a gentleman and he's interested in this one up on Northwest Street. There, it should go north, it's on the left-hand side, it's a two-story. He called me and said that he is definitely going to refurbish that house. So we'll, we'll see if that comes to fruition. So, and we are making headway, but then I've had some other people come and say, Westport's a diamond in the rough. So sometimes I think that people in Westport don't believe in themselves and what it could be versus the way that it is now. But we have people come out of town and say what it could be. So enough of that, but anyway, Connie, what's an update on the sign? Who's going to give it?
Brian.
Okay.
We got an updated quote today from Imagination Graphics, they're spinning their, and they're. Got the engineer contact, we don't have the plans yet. But I'm waiting on the, the convenient time to meet with them to get plans grown up, get the P E stamp on the plans before we can present it to Endot and get their approval. I also found out we have to have county approval, we have to get permit. County to put the signs up. I don't see any issue of this coming dead before, before the end of year. Hopefully, we can have a change of law.
That'd be great. Is the county going to charge like they charge other people, put up a business sign?
You'll have to do a zoning thing. And yes, you will be charged for thirty-five dollars and it's not refundable. I hate, I mean, yeah, everybody has to do it. And if you don't do it, then you can be fined more than that. So, yeah, it's just something.
We're going to get in on more.
Absolutely, absolutely.
County, they'll just reverse stamp it, we pay our money and move on.
Okay, that's good, sounds good.
And you, you guys are making.
Oh, we got a little easy sign, well, Brian and the Sonic guys are here. I think we got to make sure we've got the liability insurance covered. When we sign in the eastern area, if we satisfy that, we can carry the sign. When we sign in the eastern area, once we satisfy that, we can carry the sign.
Oh, good.
When uh when the engineer that you guys. When your engineer, he he will know what the the uh rules is about where he puts this sign.
That is the key.
Yes, make sure that he has a, okay. Go up and ask, go up and ask at the.
Well, that's that's what we're paying them to.
Yeah, but tell him he make sure. I want to see.
Thank you, Brian. Next on here is no trucks allowed signs.
I live on Range and Damon, it it's not really a problem. It's not that far to the highway. And uh but I do know Shot Street, right, every morning. Shot Street is bad.
Insurance for everybody to go down Shot Street is, but as long as you put a sign there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's the sign will stop every trucker.
Well, another thing too, when they put that bridge down here too, we're gonna have a real increase. We're gonna put the trucks in. Signing and.
Yeah, hopefully by then we can maybe talk to uh.
Azure's.
Obviously, they'll have to find a different route. Hopefully, it's not back in town, still pretty bad. They already got the door to town for a round.
Right.
Hopefully, they go on that like nine fifty to the highway or something. But usually, it's not the local guys that choose the problems.
Don't know where they're at. Yeah, we don't know where they're at. Do we need a motion on that, Damon?
We have an emergency route, but we don't have any truck route. So do we have to have some kind of written documentation saying what's around?
Yeah, there is some that says truck route.
We don't have anything written down that says what our truck route is. The emergency route is just from the fire department to the highway.
Apparently, so if we don't have one, we have to get one, if.
Well, I think we can put the no trucks on the truck.
I don't know. I don't know what the traffic rules are. It's probably a Alex thing.
Assurance you make one, not that you're gonna have fifteen people come in and say to one of my street either. So yeah, you gotta be careful with what you do.
So right now, biggest concern is just to try and bring a fifty two quarter down to Shot Street.
Right.
Turn up there on hand, you know, I mean.
Knock down poles and and stop signs and.
Around a block instead of backing up a half block. Get to the dumpster or something, you know what I'm saying? So that's what I'm saying. If you notice in someplace they do for the tonnage. You know, nothing over this way. Down this road or anything over this way down this road.
I don't know that that's enforced anyway. I mean, I do know that some of the bridges have tonnage weights with semi schools that go across them.
Yeah, I think it's two separate issues.
It is.
A signage and the other for a truck route.
Right.
I think signage just kind of. Say sign. For truck out. For certain ways to navigate.
That's true. Would coordinate that with Damon or the place for my name, Damon? Cause we do we have on the road grades, I know. We put the roads out for bids, you got different grades on the roads. It that's just based on the condition or the weight that the road can handle.
And the condition of those. Yeah, cause I mean, you get eight thousand pounds constantly going up and down on road like the interstate. Because there's a group set in those roads that are very sparse, they bounce constantly beating on it. Day after day, you know, you know.
That's true. All right. Well, that's gonna be a work in progress. But uh yeah, Damon, you can kind of help Alex and anyone get that finalized.
Probably gonna end up having to get a proposal to Gloria from whatever engineering.
Okay, next on the agenda is Morgan Eaton and Trust, what? I'm sorry. Is that possible?
You're the board. I think you can do whatever you want with that.
Yeah, but I I understand that, Brian, but we needed, uh, they said like, is it legal to do it that way?
Well, no, we want to make changes to to some of the county things. They tell us that they're required to get a state traffic study, so I don't know if that's the case here locally or not.
It's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's not, don't overthink.
Right, and and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's true. We need to find out if that's something that there's a state law or some type of law and that we've got to buy by. So. Yeah, okay. But thanks for pointing that out, Brian. Okay, next, last on the agenda is Morgan Eaton Trust zoning request. Yes, go ahead.
So we just bought ten acres. We just wanna rezone, create a residential.
I'm sorry, could you stand up a little bit?
Uh, so we just bought ten acres. I don't know if you guys know. You can kind of see it where we, you know, done a little bit of work.
Is that right at the hill as it turned up?
Yeah, because there's a little bit of gravel. Um, we just want to rezone to build a house.
Did the zoning board tell you you had to come here? Well, wait a minute, did they tell you to come here? Okay, we just have to say okay or no. Yeah, that's fine. But yeah, it is. I make the motion that we approve letting these folks get a permit to do so.
I have a second, so on favor. Yeah, that's no problem.
That's all she had to have is a letter. You take it to the zone or to the uh courthouse and then just give it to her and she'll be okay. Have to pay your pay your money for your permit.
Is anybody that wants to build a house, are there like lines here where it's only, they can only go to the county to ask for any threat? Because I was told that Westport doesn't.
Okay.
Go past the meat locker.
Right. So. But what if you.
Sounds like the zoning board involves us.
Absolutely, they're involving us for some reason and I'm on that board too. So yes, if I were you and you wanted to build a house and it's passed, you want what?
I want to make sure I can stop.
Well, you'd have to go to, yeah. You have to go to the zoning board and they will tell you when that will be in front of the board and then you'll have to be there to voice your yea or nay. No, no. Evidently, they haven't been here to ask if they could do it. I mean, I don't know if anybody that wanted to build, come in, they want to build a house, going out by the by the meat locker, do you?
Yeah, but I mean, if it's owned agri, we'd have to give.
Yeah, if it's zoned agriculture, they still have to get a permit.
Okay, so will they notify us if it's right in front of our property?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there will be a sheet with everybody's neighbor, with your neighbors all on the sheet and then you can yea or nay it. They'll send it to you.
There was a, there was just a rumor right now.
Okay. If it's zoned agriculture, and this is just my idea, they probably won't get to do it. Is it farmland now?
Yeah.
They're in trouble.
Yeah, it always, it always has been as far as we know, we've been there since years.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's extenuating circumstances or it's gonna be a rezone for housing. I don't think they'll. But you can go up there and check to be sure that they're, they don't pull one under you and you not know it.
I didn't see anything was going on.
No, it's fine. Yeah, I haven't.
They haven't had a meeting.
Yeah, I haven't had anything across my desk about anybody building something like that.
That might be.
That'd be big, that'd be a big bunch of houses.
Yeah.
Might be just a rumor now and adding on into that, even though that if they get turned down by the uh zoning board, they have a right to appeal it to and have to go to the zoning appeals board. Yeah, you'd have to attend that meeting as well. You know, you'd have to go to both meetings. Cause you could voice your yea or nay, both meetings. It could end up that way, it's possible.
I'm not against building houses. I mean, the water table out there is already.
Well, there's too much involved for somebody to ever think to tell somebody, I'm building eight houses here.
Right.
There is, like you said, there's the water and there's the sewer and there's the roadways and yeah, is it, is it in town, out of town?
Right, that's what we weren't sure of, like the creek behind us. It could be a whole thing next.
You know, where is that? I guess we don't really know.
Uh, you know the Beck's Farms houses that were out here past the meat locker, there were two of them. And then there was twenty five acres in the middle. That on the right hand side, the two T and houses right up here. And then the only thing separating our houses was the field and a little bit of wood back there. And it was bought, the field and woods were bought.
Yeah.
It's just two zero eight seven, but it used to be a different address, but five hundred or something like that. I don't, I don't understand that part my husband does, but.
If Beck's farm's owned, that's farmland.
Well, they did. Um, and then that land was being bought, uh, around here locals were farming it. And then they agreed on a price and he bought it for twenty five thousand less than they wanted for it. But I mean, we had tried to buy it for years, it would not come down. And it's mostly woods and it's only, it's not that many acres of.
Well.
So he bought all the way from ours all the way back to there, basically where the reservoirs are.
I would say check into that. So I I would just go up there and check. They don't know for sure.
Because even on the last, we'll move on. They involve us in in within the corporate limits on things and we kind of, as a courtesy, they ask us, especially if it gets to where you want to build a barn or shed or the houses will be just a bit different. Coaching on the property line, too far away from setbacks, they'll ask us that. Usually, we've done things like it's two feet or something like that and it's no problem. I mean, you need to get five feet and that's a problem, but little things like that. And then like what they want to do is just, yeah, the town says, okay, no problem type of thing. And that's kind of where we can. All right. I will, yes, go ahead. We'll start with you. As far as, you know what?
The houses there were the lift stations that cross from the.
Right, and it was, it was with the understanding too that we were going to give you a year to take care of the property. What are your intentions on it? What are you going to do with that? In what kind of timeframe?
Right now, it is being moved.
We're scheduled for May.
Okay, that's not due until May.
Yeah, I understand that, but still you're wasting, I, to me, you're wasting my tax dollars, filing suit against me. I can't even try to work with it. After the board totally messed up my property. This is the town, this town totally messed up my property to start with.
In what way?
Uh, when you built your new pump station, your contractor dumped stone along my creek on my property, it was underestimated all over my property.
I guess I know back there and I didn't see where any stone was said that.
Well, they've done dirt over now, but it's still the rut, still the nice.
When was that that they did that? When was that? And do you, you're just now saying something about.
Hold up. I said something about that it happened.
Did?
And the board.
No. We have a past president.
Yeah, that's fine. I did say something about it. I called the board.
You called the board?
Yeah, well, I called down here and they said it was not their issue, it was the contractor's issue.
Who did you speak to? See, here's the thing, we have.
That was a many years ago.
We weren't even, we weren't even on the town council that time and the town clerk is no longer here, so we don't have any way to verify that.
I'm not asking if you can do anything about it now. I'm trying to keep my property quiet. It's locked up.
Well, you have till June and and that was, that was a year, wasn't it? Yeah, last summer.
That was here.
Yeah, in June. So you've got till this June.
Actually, you guys reviewed his property back in like September, October. And you determined it was time to go under litigation. So I think the next thing that is appropriate, maybe Alex can correct me, is that you'd have to discuss this under litigation.
And how.
What issue do I have to my home?
Listen, how long has it been since anyone?
Well, that's, that's, I'm glad you said that, Gloria. It's true because it's pending litigation and we can discuss it at the town council meeting. Am I correct in that? You had that in your letter.
No window lights. How long had it been since setting it?
Probably fifteen or twenty years.
It has, I'm signing on, it has architectural shingles on it. Well, I bought that property, I had a thirty-six inch pump station. Thirty-six inches, now I got what, fifteen foot?
Well, as Alex said, contact him, talk to him about it. We can't discuss litigation in open may. Who told you that?
Actually, we called you back and asked that you call our attorney and you actually have talked to our attorney once, I think. So I'm not sure where this.
I made a loss. I, who did you, who, who called you and said you need?
I was going to be here last month at the meeting.
Yeah, do you know who you talked to? I made a loss. I don't believe you talked to John or myself or Joyce.
Harry, I know that he's talked to us in the office and we recommend that you talk to our attorney and he has talked to our attorney. So I think there's nothing to debate on that.
We can't. I'm, I'm sorry that somebody told you that you had to be here because that wasn't true. Any pending litigation, we can't discuss in an open forum. I beg pardon?
Why did you decide?
I can't, we can't talk about it. You would talk to our attorney and talk to him through it about it. That's, that's.
So I'm gonna waste my money to defend myself and get something to use for me because.
Well, not necessarily because you had to see, I, I talked to our attorney. That won't cost you anything. Guy sat next to Damon. You know, Scott, you're right here, you know what month that was?
April, maybe May, it was turned off. Somehow. The month of July got turned back on accidentally. Secretary receives a great big giant water bill. Damon's insurance paid out, it's taken care of, that it was not told to be turned. Well, it kind of messed up our floor in there. We've talked to our insurance and they settled a little bit on that, but it's really fair that our insurance covers.
Uh, purpose of they care?
Went for state baiting earlier this spring and it just started and one of the guys that was there had a, or a vice or someone out and shut it off. Get the catch rate or bill. So that it would cost us to get it turned back on if we didn't get our budget. We didn't tell anybody down here to turn the water itself back on. Our realtor went to show, caught it the day we get ready to show our client the next, the next day. And there was an edge of water that ran around the fence, clearly catching. Seated down on the floor while the next day when he shows his real estate client, he couldn't send these in, the inside of the main floor to check everything out because it's state of the water. So there it is. The day it was turned on, go down the next day, Steve Snyder was supposed to go down and talk to somebody.
Yeah.
I, I've been, I was checking into that whole situation because I was told one thing and then found out some other information and I talked with Damon today. So we've been trying to do some research on what exactly happened with that situation. And that's why I had Damon call you today to see, hey, what was your understanding of it all? So I think the next step is that our insurance and your insurance need to talk and figure out that situation. There's nothing more I, I can do. I mean, we're gonna take the water leak adjustment off of there so you won't have that bill. But, um, yes, but I just found out your, your insurance today, so we'll get that figured out.
One thing we can accomplish tonight is as far as the water bill itself and that's rest of it, like you said, well, your insurance company talked to our insurance company, see where we're going there, but yeah, we can take that water part of it tonight and so.
Based on the summary, was there some confusion? Is that, is that what happened, what you guys discovered today?
There, there's some issues with when the water was turned off and when it was turned on. Um, I think there's some language being tossed around. Um, we're saying we want the water shut off, but what we're talking about is we don't wanna be billed monthly. So there's some issues with, I think the girls thinking the account is shut off versus the water meter shut off. So we're still trying to figure that out. Yeah.
Got this screwed somewhere and that was about the time it got turned back on.
Yeah, so.
So was there a turn on?
Lose our account.
Over here instead of up there?
So, so the girls, you know, when we get a, an account opened, we turn it on, both physically and in the system. But I think there's some language tossed around about, um, they wanted to keep their bills so they didn't have to pay a deposit here versus out there. And so the water was off, but in our system it says it's on, so then when the guys are told to go turn it off, are they turning it on or off? We don't know. So there's some confusion around all of that.
I make the motion that we can adjust it.
On favor?
Brian?
You agree together?
Brian, do you have anything? You mean an adjustment?
Yes.
What happens is that that's the thermal leak, the water is off the outside of the pipe. So if that water goes through the heater, you have to have your great thing. On the other side of the heater, where you have to have a faucet or a faucet or something, not it works that water escape. If that line is under pressure, just because that valve is gonna shut open, that water cannot meet that pipe. As long as there's nothing open on the opposite side of the heater. That heater won't turn, that water. It's not like it's, it's not, it's not leaking outside of a pipe outside of the heater. The heater is not, it need to not be charged for that water. Turn it back on. We took the reading on the heater and started here.
Are you still using that much? Something's wrong then. But if, if it's leaking between the meter and your house or in your house, that's where the water is at.
It's only the valve inside the house off, right? Okay, so when I turn the heater back on, I videotaped the heater. Which will explain my theory, is as long as that pipe is charged, there's pressure on that line. And water cannot flow in there until you open up valve or faucet or flush the toilet or you have. What's that? The same time that I don't control, it's all, you move the meter. And your valve.
It was a leak? That, that you're believing was pre-measured or post?
It's both, I mean, it was leaking pretty.
So how much, how much are you asking for credit for?
How much is your water bill usually?
I don't know, John, because I haven't looked in his account to see what the difference was. I, my understanding was they did not charge him for any water that went through that when they were replacing the meter and doing all of that, so he's not getting an excess charge for any leakage. Um, I think my understanding is he's saying he feels like it's been leaking for a while or something maybe and I'd have to go back and look at his consumption, but I don't know. I honestly have no idea because I didn't know he was coming tonight to request a, a discount or anything. We have to go by our ordinances if they do give any kind of adjustments, so.
Oh, what we'd have to do is we'd have to have her take a little bit of history. And then have some numbers associated with it.
Carl, that's.
That's probably where a lot of it.
I mean, if, if, if there's a leak and, and there's a large enough variance in.
And then we just have to have document, we have to have documentation that you repaired the leak. If you know it's your toilet and you replace the enters or you get a new toilet or whatever, we need receipts or copies of the repairman or the plumber or however you fix that.
That, that's fine, Carl. It's something we can't ask this evening because we don't have any figures to go by to see how much you need it just to be asking for it.
And have Gloria get that set and then come to the next meeting and we've got some numbers with it.
Do you have anything further? Do you want to say anything else? Roy?
I've already explained that we can't do that. We can't make that change because it's part of the grants that, that we've taken, so we can't go against that. And it, these grants are for extended periods of times over decades, so we, we can't go against. We're, we're, we're only billing according to, to the rate study and the grant that we've been issued. But I just explained. We, we, we can't, we would go against the, the grants that we have received.
Make the steps necessary, start making the steps today to fix that. We don't want that happening.
So, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about that and somebody's gonna come in for a long period of time for as far as a business concern, that startup cost is really nominal. So if you're talking about bringing six or seven businesses in on a repeated business, on a repeated basis out there at the, on three, then just maintain the water bill yourself and include it in on your lease.
No, I'm talking about my, my garlic root man, sorry, business here. And he had his water turn on costing three hundred dollars every water plant. And he got his first bill for seventy dollars after four days. He said, I had to use one drop of water.
There's, we can't fix that. I've already explained it.
You need to fix it.
So when we revisit that, when the grant period is over in forty years?
No, no, we're not gonna wait forty years, we're gonna fix it soon.
Well, no, you. I don't think you understand what I'm saying.
I know you don't understand what I'm saying, we just need not to overcharge.
You, you think?
Every other town, every other city, guys, programs or water bills, it's less than thirty days. Either at the beginning or at the end of the bill.
Can you give it, can you give, I, I, I'll tell you what.
Call, just, just call.
No, you, you gave us some information.
I don't need to call them because I talked to the people that, that were local, that, that, that have worked with our particular grant and the rate study for that. We're incapable of doing it. We would violate the grant that was given to us by not taking it seriously.
Roy, I, I see what you're saying and I see what John's saying, but you guys aren't meeting the middle of this. We had rate study is based upon our money. And they come back, the, the government comes back and say, okay, this is what your rate has to be per the money that you borrowed and do it all this. It's not coming from us. It's coming from a, a government. Oh, so, okay. So then what you're saying, Roy, is. How do you go to the government and get the government to change that?
Where's it saying that you have to bill for four months, only partial months of you? Does it say that?
There's a minimum rate. How it works is each month, there's a minimum rate and that.
Term pro-rate?
Let me explain it. Um, the rate that they establish, say it's for water, say it's $32 a month is the minimum rate that we have to charge. That's to pay for the water treatment plant. That's to pay for the piping that gets the water to you. They, the rate consultant described it as that's the privilege of getting running water. And I know it's unfortunate because each town has a different base rate. But then we're obligated to pay that as soon as you, or charge that. As soon as you. Turn on your water, that base rate starts and then any consumption over that base rate. Is billed to you. So everybody pays that base rate and that's what's determined by our rate studies, which is what we have to have in place. To do the grants. That's, that's how we get our grant funding. So, um, we can't change that base rate. If you come in and you, if you come in and you are turning the water on for three days, we have to at least charge that base rate. We can't prorate it. We're not permitted to do that.
He turned on water on purpose. We came in here, just like anybody telling them, hey, I know you're turned on today. We're going to read your bill in like two days. And we're going to charge for a full month. You might say that to him.
We always tell our customers that there's a minimum or a base rate. That they can be charged for a month.
Days, if you waited two more days, you would be charged for a full month.
In the office, we do not call them.
Okay, they weren't perceiving them.
No.
Why can't you?
Ask, ask a question.
Just explain.
Roy.
We understand it's a base rate.
Roy.
The number of days they have.
I think.
You're saying they need to be charged for a month if they have one day. Okay.
The thing is, Roy.
They have a month and one day, they're charged for two months.
There's all, and we, we always hold public meetings on everything. And there was, when the rate study person was here, it was a public meeting.
He said, and I quote. The folks are paying for the right to have water to their home. There, you don't have to prorate anything. You're paying, when you're paying your bill, you're paying for the right to have that water to your house, whether you use it or not. Well, you know what? He never complained to me about it. It's ordinance. No, it's not. It's not what you want. If you want to. Well. Roy, it's, it's written in ordinance. I do. I do. I pay water bill, don't you?
Yep.
Yours is ongoing. We're, we're, this is a new business that come to town. We don't want to destroy it yet.
But we had to turn on our water initially too.
Absolutely.
Just, just by the way, we're at the next meeting to discuss.
It's ordinance twenty twenty dash seven. You can look it up on our website. Ordinance twenty twenty dash seven. That's fine.
And that's fine, Roy, but the thing.
Start pro-rating our bills.
Roy, Roy, Roy. Roy, Roy, you're on your hobby horse and you're like, yes, you are on this hobby horse. And the thing is, and the thing is, we have open meetings and I wish when the rate study people would be here. Or the other one, the, the open meetings we had, that you would be here and you could ask them the same questions and you would get your answers posted. Oh, we just told you the ordinance, the last thing.
Just one question on the current. Minimum rate. It has to be charged per month.
Yes.
The way that the grant is returned and paid back. Way that it's set up is that when the water's turned on, we charge an excess.
And if you don't want. Total cost is to cover the water treatment plant. It's to cover the insulation and all of that. So that's why it's at a certain rate. And when we have a water project, that rate goes up to pay for the construction of those water plants or typing or whatever. That's why we have.
But when Roy brought it up three months ago, we discussed it specifically with the rate consultant here in the meeting. And that's the information that we got back, that we weren't capable of doing.
Yes, he was.
Two or three months ago.
We can bring another one.
Y'all want fixed? Y'all want fixed?
All right, Roy.
So we're asking it. It's, it's only charged if you want to use. Does that seem more?
We, we don't charge people any more. Water than they use. We don't charge people any more than the water that they use.
You charge my car for $70.
That's the base rate for having the water.
Absolute.
You said we're going forward.
We didn't use any water over that. We didn't charge them anything in excess.
Let's just wait until you, you do it. We'll come back. We'll revisit again. Get it fixed, guys.
All right, Roy, your concern is well noted. Go ahead.
My question's the same. What was the average speed going down Main Street? Joe said?
Sikes out there.
Yeah. It was me how accurate I was and I haven't lost my, uh. Perspective of speed when I was an officer. Like, I don't know you doing about that. I don't get why I was too old. Yeah, I know one young kid right after he put it up, I don't know if there's a camera facing that way or not. I didn't look at that close, but. He actually passed a gentleman going down Main Street. It was a young kid, you know. Yeah, we need, if we ever get one of those, we need a camera going each way so that we can get them coming and going. Text or something, let me know what he, what the average speed was. I'm really curious about that.
Already there being further, no further questions. I'm sure there's more questions.
Sorry, I have a couple of things. Um, we had someone that requested a, an additional adjustment. Um, they had a water adjustment earlier in the year and they haven't made their twelve month cycle. And they are asking for a second adjustment. Um, it's Brittany McNeilan at four oh six Northwest Street. After the adjustment, which was pretty memo, minimal, her credit would be $28.36. So I just have to have approval for that. Was there a reason?
What was, what was the reason?
They replaced the main line to the house and there are no leaks on this property. And that was a confirmation from their contractor, guys contracting.
Contractor did it. Well, the motion on the floor. I'm second. On favor, aye.
And then I also have one more thing, sorry. We had had some discussion about security cameras and I got a new estimate. Um, we had a fellow we were working with last year on our security cameras, but he disappeared in August and he's never gotten back to me. I've done follow-up messages. Tried to reach out to him and nobody has heard from him. So I don't know what happened. But, um, I had, um, talking to technologies come out and evaluate our system today and he can build off of what we already have because he used similar. Equipment, yeah. Uh, but we're looking at adding some additional cameras. Um, adding a more expensive camera in our, um, prime area where we have the drop-off box so that we can see if people are putting their bills in there and all that. Um, so it, it was, it was a bit more expensive than I thought it was going to be because I think the first time around, it was only like two or three thousand. But this time he gave us estimate for $3,905.89.
So the PTC they're putting in or for those.
Yes.
That's why.
Yeah, it's just for the camera. It's $649.99. Um, he's also going to add a camera out by the barn, like on the bulk water area because we don't really have anything. Um, that reaches because most of our cameras are on this building. Um, he'd also be putting a system in the barn with security cameras. So that's additional. Um, equipment that he'd be adding and then the labor, just the labor and programming, stuff like that. It's almost two thousand just for that part of it. So I want to put that out there. I didn't think we need, we don't have to approve it tonight, but I want. Have that going around in your minds and maybe I can.
Are you talking to each other or are they running live?
You know.
Yeah, he's talking about the, the server that's in here. It's only a four camera. Open that one to the barn. Personally, we didn't have the wireless to run wires.
Um, I think so, but I didn't have a chance to go through it. He just came today and then he sent the estimate this afternoon. So I haven't had a chance to. Look at the budget and see where it would be. So I would prefer to determine that before we make a official decision. But I wanted to just throw that out there as something that. We're looking at.
Yeah, I ready for the next town council meeting. All right, do I have any motion?
I make the motion.
I'm second. Meeting officially closed.